Good evening, good evening. I'm calling the meeting for the month of November together. We welcome everyone who's here tonight. At this time, we'll ask for a moment of silence and pray for those that need it. Thank you. Amen.
Amen.
We had a little difficulty tonight getting a preacher because it's Wednesday night and all in church. Counsel, you have before you the agenda for tonight. What are your wishes on that?
I'll make a motion with Dr.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Opposed likewise. Item number four is the consent agenda. We have several items on there that we had discussed and talked about before. We've got minutes from the regular meeting and the November first work session. Approval of tax releases, memo from the city manager regarding compensation. Approval of budget amendments, eleven nine twenty-two. Resolution twenty-two eleven, the PD lumber river, lumber region hazard mitigation plan. And last one, item F is the parking prohibited on Washington Avenue. What are your wishes on this council?
Make a motion we approve.
I'll second.
Okay, then what else got any comments? Okay, if not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Thank you. At this time, we come to this portion of our agenda where we ask if there's anyone that's in the audience tonight. If you have any comments for the council or questions or whatever, please come forward and state your name and we will listen to them. Okay, if no one wishes to make comments, we will close the comments.
Yeah, yes.
Oh, we do, okay. Need to get it, come. What's your name, sir?
Hello, my name is Ethan Burns. My fiance and I recently just moved down here in August from Ohio. She's a schoolteacher over at LJ Bell. There's a property next door to us that's been in foreclosure and we're, I'm looking to obtain it. And I haven't been able to get much information on it other than it's in the works of, sorry, excuse me, in the works of foreclosure. They're waiting on attorney paperwork. I was just wondering if I can get any information, timeline or something like that.
What's the address?
What's that address?
The property number is fifty-seven sixty. I live at seven twelve McDonald.
Seven twelve McDonald.
Yep. It's the new construction.
Oh, you live in the new, okay.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Yep, so we just moved in there beginning of August.
Where is it?
On the intersection.
Oh, 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 okay. And which house is in foreclosure?
There, it's an empty lot. It's right next door to me. So I have the highway seventy-seven on one side. And then a lot next door is the vacant lot. I've been maintaining the grass, so I don't have rodents, other stuff like that. And I haven't been able to get in contact with the owner of the property either.
Is it on the back end of your house?
Yeah, upper side.
On the side of it. So we have Emma Jean behind me and then the property next door on McDonald.
Okay, okay.
I don't, Gail, do you have any comment on that at all? I wasn't familiar with.
If it's in foreclosure, is it foreclosure by the county, Richmond County Tax Office?
I'm assuming so. Taxes haven't been paid and I have a tax balance.
I would, have you contacted Richmond County Tax Office?
I have, and I just keep getting the same message.
Yeah, they're the ones that do the foreclosures. We're not involved in that. And I wish we could help you. But they're the ones that start and finish the process with an attorney that they've hired to do so.
And once they do that, they'll put it up for sale.
Okay, yeah, and I've been calling for, going on three months now. I've been calling about every other week.
Stay after them.
Yeah.
Is there anything we can do for him? Because he's got a point if the grass goes up and you're gonna have rodents and stuff like that.
Well, first of all, thanks for coming out. Second of all, you can, we can connect and, you know, get in touch and, you know, make sure that we have your contact information. And that way, if there's something that comes up at the staff level, I can work with you as a city manager or city attorney as well.
Yeah, just two other thoughts on that. I can take a look and see if there's an active case on it. The county sometimes includes me, sometimes they don't. But giving an idea of where they are in the process. As Mr. McQueen just said, sometimes it takes the county years to actually go through a process. So you just gotta kind of stay on them. But we'll be happy to take a look at that and get in touch with you.
Okay, yeah, I think from, if I remember correctly, it's been twenty-twelve or twenty-fourteen since taxes have been paid on the property.
Yeah, and the county's gonna wait a while, but even after they file a lawsuit to start foreclosure, it'll take them years from that process.
Okay.
So it just pays to pay attention. And as I think you already know, sometimes you can get a really good deal on a piece of property in foreclosure.
Yeah, that's what I've been hoping for.
Several years ago, we closed that street right away through there.
Yeah.
And the fellow that lives in the blue house got part of it and that other piece of property got the rest of it.
Yeah, I got a piece of that property and then the next door got majority of it. Okay, well, that's it. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And you're certainly welcome anytime. Please come back.
If we can do anything else, let us know.
Yeah.
Welcome to Hamlet.
I couldn't understand it. I don't know the house.
At, okay, at this time, I'll close the comments to attendees. We'll move along to new business. Item number six is the proclamation for National Hospice and Palliative Care Month. I believe we have someone here tonight from, please come up. Say your name and any comments you'd like to make.
Lisa Lucky, I'm representing Richmond County Hospice, and we appreciate y'all the support that you guys give us.
Okay, if you'll wait there just a moment, I am going to read this proclamation from the mayor. Whereas for more than forty years, hospice has helped provide comfort and dignity to millions of people, allowing them to spend their final months at home surrounded by their loved ones. Whereas the hospice model involves an interdisciplinary, team-oriented approach to treatment, including expert medical care, quality symptom control, and comprehensive pain management is a foundation of care. Whereas beyond providing physical treatment, hospice attends to the patient's emotional, spiritual, and family needs and provides family services like respite care and bereavement counseling. Whereas palliative care delivers expertise to improve quality of life and relief from pain can be provided at any time during an illness. And hospices are some of the best providers of community-based palliative care. Whereas in increasingly fragmented and broken healthcare system, hospice is one of the few sectors that demonstrates how healthcare can and should work at its best for its patient. Whereas one point six one million Medicare beneficiaries living with life-limiting illness and their families received care from the nation's hospice programs in communities throughout the United States in twenty-nineteen. Whereas hospice and palliative care organizations are advocates and educators about advanced care planning that help individuals make decisions about the care they want. And whereas the Centers for Medicare and Medical Medicaid Services have pledged to put patients first in all of its programs, including hospice, ensuring a coordinated and patient-led approach to care, protecting patient choice, and access to individualized services based on patients' unique care needs and wishes. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Bill Bayless, mayor, by virtue of authority vested in me by the city of Hamlet, do hereby proclaim November of twenty-twenty-two as National Hospice and Palliative Care Month and encourage citizens to increase their understanding and awareness of care at the end of life, discuss their end-of-life wishes with their families, and observe this month with appropriate activities and programs. In witness thereof, I have hereunder set my hand the ninth day of November twenty-twenty-two and cause this seal to be affixed. And I'd like to present this to you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Okay.
Item number seven is proclamation of Veterans Day. We have, we have Veterans Day every year on November the eleventh. And it's to honor those veterans who have either lost their lives or who are veterans who are living with us today. And I have a proclamation on this. Whereas the veterans in our community have served their country during peace and war and have kept our democracy safe. And whereas November the eleventh is designated and set aside to honor all those who fought, died, and became disabled while defending this nation. And whereas it is fitting that a period of time be set aside to honor and show respect to these great men and women. Now therefore, I, Bill Bayless, by virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Hamlet, do hereby urge all citizens of our community to reflect on the democratic freedom and recognize the great contribution that veterans have made possible for each of us by paying tribute on November the eleventh. In witness thereof, I have hereunder set my hand and cause to be affixed to seal of the city of Hamlet. And just please ask everybody, if you see a veteran, thank them for their service. Counsel, we have before us tonight the consideration of the Withers-Ravenall Task Order Number One for a Comprehensive Plan. We believe we have discussed that and we need to make a motion. Did you have any comments?
No, only just to reiterate, you know, from our previous discussion that taking the approach of just doing the whole thing and doing it once and doing it well. The timeline is laid out in there. It is a, it's prescribed as a twelve-month timeline, but if you actually look at the timeline broken out, we hope to be done by October of next year. And along the way, there's lots of services and public engagement and things that we're gonna be getting. And I think we're gonna really get a really high-quality product for the, for the community.
Counsel, what are your wishes on this?
I move that we approve.
Have a motion and have a second. Any further discussion on the council? If not, all in favor say aye. Opposed likewise. Thank you. At this time, we'll move along to item number nine, which is city manager's report.
Thank you, mayor. We are gonna be closed Friday in observance of Veterans Day. There will be no interruption to our services as far as garbage pickup and things of that nature. We will be back to work on Monday, the following week. An additional holiday is Thanksgiving this month, which will be closed for November the twenty-fourth and the twenty-fifth. On that Thursday, the Thursday garbage pickup will occur on Wednesday. And we began sending that message out today to make sure that the folks that are, that normally get picked up on Thursday will get picked up on Wednesday when we're observing the Thanksgiving holiday. Later this month, we will have our tree lighting and festivities down at Main Street Park in the depot. That will be on the twenty-eighth at five-thirty P M. We're also looking forward to the Christmas parade on December the eighth at six P M. That's our second annual Christmas parade of lights since we've gone to the nighttime parade. And really great event last year, and we hope that folks come out and support us again this year. If you'd like to register for the parade, you can contact City Hall, purchase a float, or just make an entry for your group if you'd like to join us for the parade. So I'd like to remind everyone that we have gone live with our online bill pay. You can get all your bill information, payments, receipts, check your balances, things of that nature. You can do all that online. Links are on our website and on Facebook. We encourage folks to use that. It's a really great service. And the last thing I'll mention is we are actively registering folks for basketball. Registration goes through December the twelfth, so you can come, register your children for those programs. And, and that, the last day for registration will be on December the twelfth.
What day did you say the tree lighting was?
The tree lighting is on November the twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth, what time, five-thirty?
Five-thirty.
And the parade is at six.
The parade's at six.
December the eighth.
And if you're in the parade, lineups will of course be earlier, and all that information is on the application. So if you're actually part of the parade, you know, you'll need to come earlier than that, but, but the parade itself will begin at six.
Okay.
Is all that online?
It is, yep, yep. Michelle's been pushing out good messaging on that, especially now we're through.
I got, really got a lot of compliments on the Halloween program she did.
Oh, gosh.
I had people call me up, stop me on the street.
I don't know that we'll ever have enough candy, but, but we, we were very, very excited with the turnout and the community support. And, you know, one of the big things that Michelle and I discussed after the fact, of course, you know, we were glad to see all the people out, but we had a lot of business support too, and those folks were out. And we always appreciate that business community getting involved, and it really takes everyone, and that was a good example of that success as well.
Anyone else got anything for the manager?
Probably jumping the gun here, but you don't have the date set for the Christmas party for the employees?
No.
I missed it the past two years because I didn't find, I, I didn't plan good enough. And I said I was gonna try to see if you had a date set where I could go ahead and clear that.
Thank you for bringing that up.
They didn't have one last year, they did.
We have, we have a couple, we have a couple tentative dates. I'll share those with you. But we're actually gonna discuss this with our, our staff tomorrow at our staff meeting.
Well, yeah, just as soon as you find out, just.
I'll, I'll make sure everybody's in the loop.
Probably a little better than I am. They didn't have, they didn't have one last year.
We didn't? Yeah. We had one last year for the first time in several years.
Yeah, I thought they had one last year, but I missed.
Yeah.
Thanks for bringing that up.
All right.
But I'll make sure I share that information.
Okay. Anybody else got anything for the manager? If not, we'll move along with the comments of council. I'll start with Mr. Martin.
I don't have anything other than, it's hard to believe that, that we're coming upon the holiday seasons. And before we meet again, Thanksgiving will already have come and gone. And I would just like to say, I hope everyone has a nice, pleasant, joyful Thanksgiving. Other than that, that's about all I got.
Thank you. Mr. Sellers?
Yeah, that just reiterate what Councilman Martin said. Thank for people to come up with interest and support the council. Please come out and support any events that Hamlet has and offer, and they're just wonderful. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Sellers. Ms. Covington?
I wanna first of all, thank all of the folks that were involved in Seaboard Festival. Despite the weather, which held us at bay for about three hours, it finally quit misting and the wind settled down a little bit and the crowds came. They were three hours late and they stayed three hours later. But they finally got them cleared out by dark, and our employees were a key part of that. And they're always agreeable and they, they do their jobs and they make the whole event a whole lot better for all of us. And I'd like to say thank you to that. Thank you to the Seaboard Festival Committee for their infinite hard work. I know that they planned for this for months and months and months. It's not easy. Also, they give the proceeds to a group in the community, and they, it's not a moneymaker for them, but it is a moneymaker for somebody in this community with needs. Also, I wanna say, repeat the question about having a great Thanksgiving and until we meet again. And also, I wanna thank everybody in Hamlet for their support for my campaign. And I'm just tickled to death that I get to serve the remainder two years that I have here. I'm really much happier here.
Mr. Stewart?
Definitely wanna thank Ms. Lisa Lucky for coming from the hospice. We appreciate things like that. Mr. Burns, thank you so much for, for joining us. Welcome to Hamlet. So we, we appreciate you buying and putting stake down here in Hamlet, so we hope we can help you in any kind of way. I definitely wanna say to the local businesses, it's exciting, like Cafe Convo and Bisquick and Axe and Grind. It's exciting to see people sit outside in Hamlet and have a cup of coffee and have lights out and all that great things. It's just, it just makes you feel good being here in Hamlet. So thank you all for investing in Hamlet for that, and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Mr. McQueen?
Just same thing, just everybody have a safe and happy Thanksgiving. Welcome back. Missed you. Thought we had a new lawyer there for a minute.
No.
No, absolutely not, absolutely not. And the Seaboard Festival, like Ms. Covington said, they, people don't realize that that whole entire show is put on by a core group of about five to six people. It's unbelievable. They have some volunteers on the day of. And if you're looking for a way to give back to the community, that's something that's fairly easy to do. Meet starting probably around April and go through. It's not, you know, it's not a big commitment until the day of. Couple meetings, hint, if somebody has moved to the city or somebody's been in the city for a while, like ladies in the back. But they really need some, some more, some more help with that. They do fabulous work. They work together as a team probably better than any group I've ever seen. And it would be nice if we could get them some, some more help. I personally wanna thank Ms. Covington for the hard work she did in, in running for the county commissioner's spot. I'll, I've told her, I'll tell everybody, we missed an opportunity to get experience and just a plethora of governmental knowledge into that position. And I, for one, am extremely disappointed in the outcome. I think that our county elections are bigger than political issues on the national level. And I, I'll say it again, I'm gonna say it one more time. We blew it last night. If you live in the cities, if you live in any one of these cities, I, I apologize for the people not voting for somebody that's gonna be willing to go in and, and try to be willing to get some things straightened out in the county. That being said, I'm really excited that you're gonna be with us for
Yeah, I am too.
another little while and hopefully longer. But that's, that was a gut punch. I'll just be straight up on this with you.
Well, I can honestly say that I really think people end up where they're supposed to be. And all I could think about yesterday morning when I got out of bed at crack of dawn, five o'clock, I thought, this time tonight at seven-thirty, I will have my life back.
That's right.
That's all I could think about was this'll be over. And when they walked out of the poll at Presbyterian Church and said the polls are hereby closed, I was the one running around the parking lot. Thank goodness.
Well, people don't realize what it is. I've never did a countywide election, but I know the citywide takes time. And it, thank you personally for me, you, thank you so much for you being willing to, to do that.
It was a huge education about our county and about people today. People, I never, I never realized that even though there's a huge disconnect between Washington and what happens in this county, when people are, they're not upset, they're angry. I've never seen people in our county behave like they behaved at early voting and polls. And, and when it passes upset and it goes to angry, you get what happened.
That's right.
And it happened, it rolled all the way through the entire state.
Yeah, absolutely.
And it just, you just cannot believe some of the things that people ask you and some of the things that go on. It was mind, and I've been in a lot of elections. I have been in a lot of elections. I have never been through anything with the public like the last seventeen days were.
I couldn't imagine. But I just want, I wanna thank you for.
I hope people realize that those problems won't get fixed, but they were looking for somebody to take their frustration out of them. They had to touch somebody, and that was the only palpable thing they could find.
Yeah.
And I just, I understand their frustration, you know, it bothers me, but God forbid that they went to the gas station before they came to vote. Woo! They were upset. But I wanted to mention one more thing that I failed to mention. And that was last Monday, I attended Veterans Day Celebration at hospice. And I encourage each and every one that ever has that opportunity to go to that celebration. It was the most moving Veterans Day Celebration I have ever been to in my life. I, they, the parts of the program, they, they did, I, you know, I don't know whether they pulled it all together, but the people at hospice always do phenomenal things anyhow. But they did a ceremony about the thirteen folds and the flag. Have any of you ever seen that? I've never seen it before. It is so impressive about your American flag and the foundation of this country and what the core of our beliefs are. If you've never seen it, you need to look it up on the internet. It's called the Thirteen Folds of the Flag. And it talks about what this country stands for. And if I hadn't seen anything else in that entire program, that really resonated with me about what we're really all about, because sometimes you can't find those values when you look out.
We have a large number of veterans organizations in Richmond County with a lot of members. And they work hard to make sure that all the veterans stay together and that the veterans are recognized. And if you're out here walking the street free, it's because somebody volunteered to go into military.
They, they, they can talk the talk, these veterans, and especially all the older ones that've been in conflicts. They can talk the talk because they walk the walk.
That's exactly right.
And it got in their heart.
And you know, going about talking about, going, talking about the vote, we were off this year over the number we had two years ago. And when people come up to me complaining about what's happening, what's going on, the first thing I say is, did you vote? If you didn't vote, you don't have a right. Mr. McQueen, get back online. Are you still?
I don't even know what I said. I'm just disappointed.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I got out of line.
Let's get back to some good stuff. On behalf of the council, we're glad that we still have Abby.
Thank you. Y'all were so kind.
On a personal level.
I'm glad you had me too.
But we do, we've got, we've got a good council. The city is running well. We've got a good manager, got a good staff. If you do have questions, please call City Hall and ask them. They will come up with an answer, or if you don't get the answer, you know, you can call one of us, but we're gonna do the same thing. We're gonna turn around, call the manager for you and, hey, what's going on? But yes, don't let anything sit and wait. If you got a question, call down here to City Hall and ask. They will answer your question.
The one so good about that, Mr. Mayor, is it's an open-door policy.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Open-door policy. He wants to hear, he, he would rather hear it from the citizens, I think, than from the council member, because that's gonna get it done.
Moving along, moving along, don't forget the tree lighting on the twenty-eighth and the parade on December the eighth. And Thanksgiving, it's on behalf of the council, again, all of us and the city, city employees. We wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. We have, while we're talking about city employees, we are really having the tree leaves and the pine straw coming down. And I'll tell you what, they have just done a tremendous job. I don't know how they keep up, but they have, yeah. One day, there'll be a big pile down the street somewhere, and the next day, it's gone. So we just, you know, can't tell them how much we appreciate what they do. So if you see a city employee out there on the street, thank him for working for us. Tomorrow night, Friday, and probably Saturday morning, we're gonna have, supposed to have a lot of rain from the storm that's coming into Florida. So just be ready to, if you see drains that are stopped up front of your house or whatever, pull the pine straw off of them so they'll drain. But please take care of yourself. If you need anything from us, we'll be available. And I believe that's about all I've got. I do wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving again. All of us do. Meet with your families, friends, and just, just have a big time. Veterans Day is Friday. Please remember the veterans on Veterans Day. I thank you on that. I thank you on that. At this time, counsel, if nobody has anything else, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
I make the motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
Got a motion, got a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. All right, thank you. We stand adjourned.